December 30th, 2014, our last meeting of 2014. Wish everybody a happy impending New Year. Selectmen announcements and updates. I'd just like to say that we, as a board, mourn the death of firefighter Ken Fields, who was laid to rest today. He served this town bravely and well for many, many years, and he'll be missed. Any other selectmen announcements or updates? No?
No, I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. And say that I'm delighted so far. No snow. It's keeping our budget looking better.
Don't say that too soon. It's early in the season.
Don't jinx it. We have one person signed up for public comment, Ms. Leitner.
Good evening, Happy New Year. My name is Judith Leitner. I'm speaking as a town meeting member from Precinct 16 and a member of the Preserve Brookline Steering Committee. And behind me, there's some other town meeting members and members of Preserve Brookline and Neighbors. We've seen the draft decision from the ZBA regarding the residences of South Brookline One, and we are deeply concerned and troubled about the proposed approval of this project. Based on your letters and public comments to the ZBA asking for a different outcome, we believe that you are as well. As Mr. Woszinski stated at the last ZBA meeting, there was not one public comment in the past year from any interest group that was in favor of this development. In the draft decision of the ZBA, the findings actually state that this project is not appropriate for the site. In light of that, we would like to know what your next steps will be to deal with this inappropriate development. Specifically, we'd like to know, what actions will you be pursuing to protect the town, protect this local historic property, protect this site, protect Brookline taxpayers, and address the many community and neighborhood concerns, as well as the concerns from every board in town and every citizen and group who spoke and wrote to the ZBA? And how do you propose to do that? We're also concerned that all of the paperwork for getting this historic, national eligible registry property onto the National Registry has not yet been completed. Have you or will you quickly hire a consultant to complete this paperwork so it can be submitted as quickly as possible, so that there will be a federal review? During the ZBA hearings, significant questions were raised about the conclusions of the peer reviewers, with many of these questions being raised not by laypeople, but by a qualified structural engineer. By law, the peer reviewers are limited in scope. More than 450 town residents signed a letter that was presented to you in October, asking the town to hire independent consultants to carry out high-quality, independent and neutral analyses of the issues of the negative consequences of blasting, potential flooding, and increased traffic on very narrow roads, and an analysis of whether the proposed high-maintenance drainage solution will actually work. What are your plans to respond to the requests in that letter? Former Selectman Benka also raised an issue about whether mass development even has legal authority to finance this type of development, and therefore had no authority to issue the preliminary eligibility letter. As the lawsuit was not amended during the summer before it was decided by the Norfolk Superior Court judge, what actions do you intend to take on this issue? And will you be filing a separate complaint? And if so, when? And most important, will you be hiring experienced outside counsel, litigators with specialized expertise in fighting bad 40B projects, to assist with and to pursue the ongoing and future litigation? Although we know that money has been spent on this issue, we are asking you to devote sufficient appropriate and necessary resources that actually support your stated position opposing this inappropriate development. As you know, money spent fighting this will be minimal compared to the yearly cost to the town of this project. I'm not a lawyer, but among us, there are quite a few lawyers who've been researching this issue for many years, and they're ready to help with assembling any supporting materials you might need. And finally, will you let us know when you will be discussing these issues and when you will have answers for us? And if you have any questions, I have your answer.
Okay. We will let you know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can move on now. We have, next item is approval of our minutes from our December 17th meeting. I have a few edits that I'll pass down to Kate.
Yes, I have submitted some as well.
And I passed some edits in as well.
Very good. I move that we approve the minutes as amended. All in favor, say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen Woszinski.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And we can now move on to calendar item number five, which is a question of establishing the Hubway Advisory Committee. Selectmen Woszinski.
Okay. The town has made an investment in Hubway, and we've just completed our third year of the Hubway contract, of the Hubway service, of our participation in the Hubway service. And during that time, we've kind of been on, I don't want to say autopilot, but we haven't been growing the service as some of the communities have been. And we've been kind of the smallest of the four communities. And we've taken steps to help keep Hubway self-sustaining. And I've been the selectmen's rep to Hubway, and I think I need a little help from a Citizens' Advisory Committee to help me strategize, help us strat, not help me, it's help us, help the town strategize, and help staff with some strategic direction. So I have drafted, with the help of Andy Martino and Joe Viola of the planning staff, a draft charge to the Hubway Advisory Committee. And I see the committee as five to seven individuals, a selectman, someone from the Transportation Board, someone from the Bicycle Advisory Committee. I would even propose someone from the Advisory Committee, someone with a financial kind of background. And then, one to three additional citizens, one of whom should be a Hubway customer and is familiar with the service. And I think that would really help us in our goal to keep Hubway sustaining and growing and be a full participant in the Hubway regional concept.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Any questions or comments? I read through the proposed charge. I don't have any changes to it.
The only thing I would flag is that the last line of this proposed charge includes the word "may" in reference to the committee. The committee may continue an advisory role after its initial study is complete. If Selectman Woszinski feels like he needs a more sustained, longer-term committee, I would be in favor of making this a more permanent committee to help advise him.
Yeah, I would accept that. The other thing, I suggested that the Advisory Committee report back to us by March 31. I think that's a little too quick, and I would propose we push that back to maybe June 30th, just to give us a little more time.
And there are a number of moving pieces here. It's my understanding that the equipment provider has gone bankrupt or is no longer providing the service.
Right.
And we're going to be entering a new contract with
With the operator.
With an operator and the software vendor, so.
And the operator's just been bought out by another company. And so, the whole relationship between the town and the operator and the equipment, the equipment manufacturer is potentially changing. So it's a good time to get some fresh help thinking about this.
And in terms of seeking members for this committee, how do you think we should proceed? Do you think it's a matter of appointment by the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, I would say so.
Or are we going to advertise for public members?
Yeah, I'd say, let's advertise for public members. I'll approach the Transportation and Advisory Committee and the Bicycle Advisory Committee, so we'll get some reps from those folks. And then, I would expect, too, that we get some staff support from the planning staff.
Okay. Any further?
So we're changing the date to June 30th, 2015, and the committee will continue an advisory role? Okay.
Can we say, "will continue an advisory role at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen" or something?
That's fine.
Okay. I move that we establish and charge a Brookline-Hubway Advisory Committee. In the charge, in the language on Section 5.1 of our package, with the following edit to the final paragraph, it should read, "The Advisory Committee is to report back to the Board of Selectmen by June 30th, 2015, with its findings and recommendations. The Committee will continue an advisory role at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen after its initial study is complete." All in favor, say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen Woszinski.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Great. Next is a food vendor license for ClearFlower Bakery. And I know they're long--
Mr. Faber is here.
Mr. Faber, come on right up. I know they're a longtime established enterprise in Brookline, but as a housekeeping matter, I think we need to get you with the food vendors license. Why don't you just tell us a little bit about your operation?
I run ClearFlower Bakery. We've been there since, I believe, 1982, a little corner bakery. We make bread, pastry. I'm sorry, I didn't realize I was going to have to be prepared to--
I can talk about it. I'm a steady customer. I waited in line like an hour before Thanksgiving to get my bread, so. They make fabulous bread. But they do have many customers coming in and out, so it is appropriate that they have a food vendor license.
Yeah, I was frankly embarrassed and apologetic to find I did not have the proper things we needed. And I did ask Brenda Costello and also Cara Bruton if it's possible this license didn't exist 30 years ago, and both of them could not tell me the answer. I'm hoping that's why, because I brought my children up, teaching them that ignorance of the law is no excuse. So I appreciate the opportunity to correct this.
No problem. Any questions for Mr. Faber? No, I don't either. So I've reviewed the application. It all appears to be in order. I move that we approve the--
Is this a public hearing?
No, it's not a public hearing. Food vendors are not. I move that we approve the application to ClearFlower Bakery, Inc., DBA ClearFlower Bakery, for a food vendor license at 178 Thorne Dyke Street. All in favor, say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen Woszinski.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Happy New Year. Sorry to drag you in for this.
No, no. I mean, really, thank you for the opportunity to correct this. And thanks for your time.
Sure.
Next, we have some interviews for boards and commission appointments. We are 15 minutes early. Irene Schaff, please come forward. Irene is a candidate for appointments to the Noise Bylaw Committee. And Irene, tell us why you're interested in this committee and why you're qualified for this.
Okay. In my application, I indicated that I have been, actually initially thought it was a leaf blower committee, but I'm glad that it's a noise bylaw committee, because I think it is broader than that. I've been, as a resident of South Brookline, where we have a lot of leaves, there are a number of issues of enforcement that I've been engaged with over the past couple of years. I already met once with the police chief about some of the issues that I've seen. And I, just being interested, I think that I have something to add to helping the solution for some of the enforcement issues, and also looking into whether the bylaw we have is appropriate, or whether there might be some changes that we might need and suggest to you. My involvement, I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 16. Primarily, I've been involved for the last six years in the battle against Chesapeake Hill Realty's expansion. And actually, 20 years ago, I was on the Disability Commission. I'm a lawyer, a law professor, and an interested resident who likes to live in a peaceful neighborhood.
Some of the charge of this committee has to do specifically with leaf blowers and some of the more technical aspects of determining their sound output and measurement criteria.
I'm aware of a couple of those issues. I'm not aware in depth of those, but I am aware there are two sets of measurements and all of that, so I'm not a scientist.
Yep.
But I think I could wade through that information.
Okay. Any other questions for Irene? All right. We are not going to make a decision tonight. We will very shortly. And thanks for putting yourself forward for that.
Thank you, and Happy New Year.
You too. All right. We're 10 minutes early for our other two Parks and Rec interviews, one for the Parks and Rec Commission, and two for the Preservation Commission. So I don't want to really start our override study committee discussion early, so why don't we just cool our heels for 10 minutes, or sing Christmas carols?
Yeah.
All right. So we'll take a break for 10 minutes. Thank you.
Wow. This is different.
What's up?
I'm just saying, Susan, you might attend to the open meeting of the Christmas Eve. They can finally--
You guys make the decisions. Well, I guess, are we expecting somebody from the open--
No. Not really. I mean, you issued this. We can just discuss what we'd like to see at our next meeting. There's really not much to talk about.
Well, I think the important thing is, I'd like to set a schedule for the remainder of January. Because I know we talked a bit about it earlier. I would even-- This one. Maybe he started. Maybe he started off as wholesale or something, not retail.
He used to be more of a, there's a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, I've been in that line, too.
Yeah. Yeah. My favorite bread is the buckwheat walnut, which is excellent.
We'll be planning the public hearings the week of the, 13th or the week of the 20th.
But it's not on here. They have a really good, oh, the black sesame seeds are great.
Because that would only give us one more meeting to come up with--
In the summer, though, I think it's Thursday you can get the raccoon with the pistachio.
And we, I know the school committee has been working on kind of a one-sheet summary that I think we need to--
So maybe we switch these two around? We meet with the school committee--
And then, I usually decide, I want some sausages and veggies. That's fabulous and super easy.
You know, I think that's the materials that you and I looked at with Susan--
I used to trouble doing it on top of that pizza stuff.
Already going to be rolled out by then, next week.
I, thanks.
We didn't technically discuss that.
I thought he was planning on talking to us next week.
But much easier, it's a non-stick.
Yeah. I asked him.
Oh, here we go. Here's one of our interviewees.
Clara, don't even sit down. We're going to reconvene. We've been waiting for you. We're running surprisingly ahead of schedule. So we're going to reconvene this meeting of the Brookline Board of Selectmen and pick up where we left off, which is Agenda Item Number Seven. We have an interview for Clara Bashler, who is reappointed for the Parks and Recreation Commission. Clara.
Hi.
Please tell us what you've been up to and why you want to be reappointed.
Well, I love being involved with the open space in Brookline, something that I think we should be very proud of and work to protect. It's important to the quality of life in our town. And as our population grows and our schoolchildren's population grows, there's a greater and greater need and demand for the open space. So I've enjoyed particularly being on the design review committees for various of the parks and playgrounds. I said in my application, these include the Billy Ward Playground, Brookline Avenue, Fisher Hill, and Elliott Playground. We're right now working on standardizing the signage for all of the open space and parks in Brookline, and I'm on that committee. I served on the Bicycle Study Committee. And we're also, I'm interested in working on guidelines for artificial turf fields to decide, to have some kind of policy when we should use them, when they're appropriate, and when we should just go with a natural field. I know that artificial turf fields can be used more often, but I think it needs to be a conscious decision if we want to go to all artificial turf fields. They also have to be renovated on a regular basis, and that should be considered. You can keep playing on bad grass, but at a certain point, you can't play on artificial turf fields if they've outlived their lifespan. I'm also looking forward to working, participating in the review of the open space plans for the devotion school, because it's a schoolyard and a park for the city.
Questions for Clara?
I do have a question. I was happy to hear you're working on the park signage, because I haven't really heard it lately, so maybe it's not so much of an issue. But there was a time when I heard from several people, "Oh, that's a dog park." Like, they didn't understand that their hours to let the dogs run free were restricted, and they seemed to feel that they had precedence over people and children. And I want, you know, I want everyone to understand that our parks are for people and children, and while we're happy to try to accommodate dog owners, they don't take, the dogs don't take precedence over the people.
You know, all the parks where dogs are allowed off-leash during certain hours are really clearly signed and marked. And people can say that even if the sign's standing right in front of them. I know that the Park Rangers spend a lot of time going to the Green Dog Parks, as we call them, or the parks that are part of the Green Dog Program, and trying to get people to comply with the rules and regulations. Even if we make all the signs uniform, doesn't mean people are going to read them and follow them, but we're trying--
Do you know when they renew their license to participate in that program, if they get any flyer or something from the town clerk's office? I don't know if that's something, if they don't, it might be something that you might want to work on, that they get something saying, "Here's the rules."
When they get a dog license, they do get that.
Yeah, yeah, they do. Just got one.
Okay. All right.
I'm the only non-dog owner on the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Clara, I'm interested in what you were saying about artificial turf fields. And I confess, I'm unaware whether there's any proposals to convert any of our existing fields to artificial turf, with the exception of one that I know there's some background discussion.
I think whenever a field comes up for renovation, it's always on the table. Can we raise money? Is there a donor? I mean, they're very expensive. You're right about that. So it's always on the table. And so, while we're discussing, can we find a donor? It's, I don't want it to be a foregone conclusion. If we find a program, we'll make it an artificial turf field. You know, I'd like to do it purposefully.
In what conditions do you think an artificial field is better advised?
In any field that gets used, it enables the field to be used more often. They dry out more quickly. You don't have to give them time to rest between, you know, so it, with such demand on fields, I think sports players want to see artificial turf, because you don't get, if it's rained for four days, you can still play.
Right.
But on the other hand, you know, in terms of wildlife birds, you know, trying to dig up worms, they're not going to find them on artificial turf fields. So I think there is an environmental reason that some people don't want to see all artificial turf fields.
Yep. So I'm just trying to envision, you know, which fields are best for it and which fields are worse for it. Any thoughts on that? Or is it a matter that we should have X number that are artificial, so we know we've got the continuous use available for them, and that the rest of them--
No, I would think I would have to talk to Lisa and see which fields are scheduled the most.
Yeah.
You know, I know that Skyline and Downsfield have been a huge hit, and so people are looking for more. I know in Brookline Avenue, there's some talk. Is that going to be an artificial turf field?
Yeah.
And then, because that's part of the Green Dog Program, that you can't have any dogs on artificial turf fields, so do we make a dog run? So there's conflicts, and there always will be, because we have limited open space.
I agree.
Yeah, I think as Clara says, though, it's, I remember our discussions when we had a couple of these before us, that the ones that are very heavily used for athletics, particularly in the spring here with the melting snow and stuff, there's a long period of time when the high school teams have trouble finding any field they can play on. So people are attracted to the artificial turf, but--
Anything further for Clara? Well, thank you. And we're not going to make our decision tonight. We will very soon. And we appreciate your service to the town and service to this commission, and we wish you a Happy New Year as well.
Happy New Year to you all. Thank you.
Next, I see Gidi Saidian is here. She's a candidate for reappointment to the Preservation Commission. Ms. Saidian.
Good evening, Gidi.
Well, tell us about what you've been up to on the Preservation Commission and why you'd like to continue, please.
Well, I have been, I guess this is my second year. I have been listening to a lot of great conversation in the town, in the preservation, and dealing with all kinds of people, which is, make it very educational for me, in some point, to know what is going on in town. And also, the fact that we're there and we are very passionate to preserve the town history is really, speaks to me as a Realtor. I see a lot of houses in my, during, you know, past 15 years, and I know the ins and outs of them, and I basically can be, I think I've been effective in the fact that I can give them ideas of what to do or what not to do, or what would be the options of to consider, even though that may not be officially part of the preservation job. But the fact that we give them some ideas besides just telling them, "No, you can't do it," I think it has added to the value of the preservation. For the next, for the next cycle, I'm planning to take a history of architect, especially in 20th century or 19th centuries, architect in the United States, in America. And I think that would also add to my knowledge and being able to lead the preservation to the right, people, basically, to the right way.
Thank you. Questions for Gidi? Okay. Well, can you, give me an idea about, as a Realtor, I think you're one of a, a lot of the people on the Preservation Commission have more of an architectural interest in preserving. And as a Realtor, you might bring a little counterbalance to that at times. Can you think of examples of times when you've had a different point of view than some of the preservationists on the commission?
the right, people basically, to the right way.
Thank you. Questions for Gidi? Okay, well, can you, give me an idea about, as a Realtor, I think you're one of a, a lot of the people on the Preservation Commission have more of an architectural interest in preserving, and as a Realtor, you might bring a little counterbalance to that at times. Can you, can you think of examples of times when you've, you've had a different point of view than some of the preservationists on the commission? Or maybe I'm wrong. Maybe that's not the correct consideration.
Well, I try to keep the conflict of interest away from my duties here. I think that's, that's basically what I've had it out for. But I don't think that, I mean, during the past period, for some reason, I came across the, to know about the history of the town hall and how the old town hall was demolished to build this town hall. And since then, it has become a big burden on me and my personality and my feeling of preserving the history of the town, that who could have, you know, approved that, that building being demolished, and now we're thinking about, fussing about a garage? And maybe, maybe in some point or another, yes, I would have voted differently from other commissioners because of that, but not necessarily because of my job.
I understand. Thank you. Anything further? Selectman Daley.
I just want to say I'm very impressed that you're taking the course. Not many of our commission members actually go out and take relevant courses, so that's a great...
A lot of them are architects already there. Well, I'm interior designer, but I did not that type of a history of architect, so I need that.
All right. Well, Gidi, we're not making a decision tonight, but we want to thank you for your continued efforts on behalf of the town and on behalf of the Preservation Commission, and we wish you a Happy New Year.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Happy New Year to you.
And I don't see Paul Bell here, but that doesn't necessarily mean he's coming or not coming. Let's move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, which is a discussion of the override study committee report and review of override issues. We don't have a specific presentation planned tonight, but as we mentioned at our last meeting, we are reaching the end game now. And I think our most important function tonight is to make sure we've got a confirmed calendar for the things that need to happen in the, in the next few weeks. And by few, I mean three, four weeks before we actually come up with a vote for a ballot, for the ballot. Selectman Washinsky and I met with Chairman of the School Committee, Ditkoff, and, and school committee, and school Superintendent Lupini, and Deputy Town Administrator Cronin last week. And I know that the school committee has got something, that they showed us an early draft of a document that is a bit more specific than we've seen in the past about the cuts that would be likely in the event, and I, you disagree with me if I'm...
No, I don't know if it's more, it, it kind of brings together in columnar format that makes it easy, easier for us to compare the different alternatives that are being presented to us, whereas until now, we've kind of gotten a whole bunch of slides where I, for one, have been, have been having trouble conceptualizing, you know, how, how do these different scenarios fit together in total? And this chart that the school, the school staff and committee's been working on, kind of, I think is intended to be a tool to help us with our conceptualization of what the override question should look like. At least, that's the hope.
So one thing for our next meeting then would be to invite Superintendent Lupini back to present this, this new, somewhat different way of, of thinking about the economics and the, and the program cuts that, that might be likely dependent on, on those economic decisions. I have another, another topic of conversation that I'd like to cover at our next meeting too. Selectman Franco, I see that you've got...
No, I'm, I'm looking forward to having the superintendent come back and walk us through this, I guess, new chart, reimagined chart, and his impression of what it tells us and what conclusions we should draw from it.
Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I think we should be, I'll be very interested in seeing what they're putting together, but I think our focus at this point should be a little more on honing in on what is this number that, that they think they, they need to meet their needs and what we think voters can live with. We'll have plenty of time after we make our decision to talk about what happens if the override doesn't pass. But, so I think that the focus now should be a little more on trying to hone in on what that number needs to be. I also, I mentioned too, I've started working on, was just trying to put, going through all the handouts we've gotten from my own, to clear my own head, on all the other decisions we need to make, as, because there were a lot of recommendations on fee increases and cuts on the town side of the budget. And I started putting something together, which Selectman Washinsky's going to take and put maybe into a, some kind of spreadsheet format, or some, something creative from the technical expert over there. Because I think, once we figure out sort of what we think that number needs to be, whether we're making, I think we are not going to be in agreement with the override study committee on a number of their recommendations.
Right, because what's coming out of the school thing, the school committee, that sheet, is going to be a number, and then what you're working on is really how we're going to finance it.
Yes, yes, yeah.
And how much of it is going to be tax increase versus some other means of...
Yes.
Finding money.
Right.
Yeah.
So the other element that I don't think we've really touched on yet, and is related to this, is what we call the ability to pay question. And it's tough to talk about ability to pay until we arrive at any number. However, you know, I, I think important to the question of ability to pay is, you know, I think we can sort of figure out what the, the numbers mean, likely to mean in terms of tax increases, you know, tax levy increases and how that affects each, each household. And of course, that will become a greater, a more specific conversation as, as a specific number is proposed. But there's another aspect to it too, which occurs to me, and that is, what Brookline taxpayers pay in comparison to other similar communities, our so-called peer communities? And I think that's a topic that we need to be educated on too. This, I hear, I hear different things from different people, and I've asked Deputy Administrator Cronin to prepare some, some comparison numbers for us, because I think we have to look at this in the context, not just of what we can pay, but what, you know, what we are paying in comparison to, to communities that we compare ourselves to.
I'll add that, over the summer, the override study committee tried to tackle this question and reached the conclusion that we have sort of municipal counterparts and school counterparts. And we tend to compare ourselves to different communities depending on what sort of lens we've, we're looking through. So I'm anxious to see what Deputy Superintendent, or Deputy Town Administrator Cronin comes up with in terms of a list of comparable communities.
Yeah, I'm surprised to hear that, because I think we generally compare ourselves on both fronts to Newton Lexington Concord.
I think there's some obvious choices.
Yeah.
And there's some, there's some choices out there where, where I understand that, you know, we don't match up on every, on every criteria, but I think there are some obvious choices.
And I will, I mean, I will continue to say that my gut feeling is that, that a package, and I'm including the debt exclusion here, where the whole thing raises people's taxes more than 10%, I think it's going to be very hard for the voters to swallow.
Selectman Washinsky and I are in agreement with you there, because we made that point in our, our meeting with the school committee superintendent, chairman and superintendent last week, so, so I agree with you on that one.
But, and I will say, Mr. Kleckner, that I do think, long-term, that we need to start working into our negotiations, and I realize this is going to take a while to achieve, but it seems that we are, I know we went to the schedule where we were paying more and more of the, the cost of the health insurance, so I think we're up to 83%, and employees just pay 17%. We are now certainly, certainly way over what anybody in the private sector would get, but I think also, when you look at others in cities and towns, there again, whichever, whoever you want to compare us to, I think we're, we're over in, in most cases. So I think that has to be part of our long, long-term thought process, doesn't, doesn't, isn't really going to help us as we come to this decision, but I think that we need to be able to say to people that that is something we're beginning to work on for the long term.
Well, I just would say, absolutely, we think that's very important. And as you remember, the current percentage was the direct result of negotiations over entering the group insurance commission, which provided significant benefits. But I hear what you're saying, and I would commit to doing that, of course.
Okay. So for our next meeting, what I would propose is that we actually tackle two, two topics. One is the superintendent and school committees revised, we'll call it, program implications of budgetary alternatives. And that second, we taught, we, we hear from Deputy Administrator Cronin, so on the specific topic of Brookline's average tax bills in comparison to peer communities.
I might be jumping ahead here, but I noticed on the draft schedule that was provided, there was also a conversation of non-tax, non-property tax revenue and municipal efficiencies docketed for the next meeting. Are we pushing that off to a future date, or do we feel as though we've sort of exhausted that conversation and be ready to hear from the public at a potential future public hearing?
Well, I don't think, this is what, sort of, I've been working on, yeah, just to get, get a sense of what those numbers are that were recommended to us. And, I mean, I don't think we've really had that discussion yet. We had presentations on some of the recommendations, and we had some pushback from various people, including some of us, but I, we certainly, I don't think, have made decisions in that area. And that's what I was trying to get my own head around by putting some of this stuff together. And I don't know, I want to ask Mr. Kleckner too, because I don't feel that, while I do appreciate the hard work of the override study committee, I don't feel that I must stay within its bounds. And if you have alternatives that you want to propose at any point, either, you know, efficiencies we might pursue, or your thoughts on some of the ones that have been proposed that you think are a bad idea, I'd certainly be happy to hear the why's and wherefore's of that.
Sure. It was certainly in a very aggressive position, you know, with the clear intent of having to reduce the amount that we would ask for the voters. But I think clearly, you've heard, I've heard, that, you know, that we're not going to be able to generate that kind of capacity. So I'll be working on your worksheet, and assuming that we get it soon, we can probably present it next week, you know, present some of that information next week.
Okay.
So that's three things for next week then. Any idea what our calendar looks like in general for next week? Because this is shaping up to be a long...
It's not too bad.
Long conversation. So, so are we clear on three things that we can talk about in the next week?
But I would like the superintendent to, personally, I would like to spend less time on the non-override scenario and more time on what, I think Ben said it well, that he was looking for something like, okay, if we do 11.1 million, which is the 90% number, you know, how many teachers does, does that put in the classrooms? How many specialists does that add?
That's what that chart will show you.
The positive side of it.
That's what you'll see. I mean, that's where they went, that we, where we weren't before.
Right.
Okay, okay, yeah.
We, last couple of times, the superintendents before us, a bunch of us asked for that kind of presentation.
Yeah.
And I think the message got through. So I think that's what we're going to be getting next week.
Yeah. I mean, certainly, the public needs to hear about the cuts that might happen, and if an override doesn't pass, as we're moving forward with this, and...
What's not going to be on there is the no override scenario.
Right, it's not going to be on the ballot.
No, it's not going to be on that chart.
Yes, okay, right, okay. Yeah. Because, as I say, I think we have plenty of time to talk about that, but that's, you know, obviously, we're not putting nothing on the ballot. So we can talk about it, talk about that more later.
Right, and that actually, that'll actually be figured out in the formal drafting of the budget, because a piece of that is going to have to be the no override scenario. So the voters will have that in plenty of time for them to see what that's going to look like, because the timeframe on that is, what, mid to late February, early March, somewhere in that range, given the late state budget schedule.
And I would say, I actually tried to call, it's hard to get a hold of people today. I tried to call Steve Cirillo.
Not too many around today.
Yeah. But the, they mentioned a small fee for online payments. They were just mentioning the motor vehicle thing. I don't see why we couldn't look at all of our online payments with, if it's 20 cents or something, you know, modest to pay your bill when you're paying with a credit card. I don't think people even notice that. And other institutions will sometimes charge you, you know, a few...
Yeah, I would like to have that conversation with Mr. Cirillo, too.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should consider, though, not just motor vehicle, but, but any online payments, having some small fee to help us cover our costs doesn't seem onerous to me.
See, and another alternative would be, there's, there are two ways to do an electronic payment. One is through the credit card, and one is through an electronic check, an ACH payment. And the town's payment service, you can do, you can do both, but the cost to the town of an ACH transaction is very cheap. That's, that's, and that, that's like 40 cents a shot, whereas credit card transaction is 3%.
What about a debit card, is that?
Debit card is very cheap too. But I don't think you can do a debit online. You can do debit, you know, when it's a counter transaction.
I'm pretty sure I've done a debit online for...
But it processes, but it processes as a, as a credit card.
Okay, yeah, okay, so I didn't realize that.
So...
So we could say on there, there's a small fee if you use...
What I, what I was even thinking is, say, ACH transactions continue to be free.
Yes.
What credit card transactions cost, so to try and...
I think we do that on the property tax.
Well, property tax, you have 3% on the, you, you pass through the ACH fee of, it's like 40 cents, which is less than the cost of a postage stamp. But you charge 3%. But I would propose we make ACH transactions free across the board, and then pass on the cost of the credit card. But I, that would, something that would have to be vetted.
Yeah.
We, I'm, I'm kind of posing policy on the fly in public, which is very, very dangerous.
I think a conversation with Mr. Cirillo is well-advised on this, on this issue.
Right, so...
And I just want to call everyone's attention to, because I mentioned this in the section on, do you want some water?
No, I'm good.
I mentioned this on the section on the refuse fee. According to Mr. Papstergen, and, and I realize this is going to take a couple of years to implement, but we're going to get, because we first have to invest in the new toters, but we're, I think we're progressing and generally, I don't know if we've actually taken a vote on it, but generally, I've heard very positive comment about moving to this, the hybrid pay-as-you-throw program. And that's supposed to result in some, I think it's $440,000 savings annually. They were telling us to raise the trash fee so we'd get $615,000 annually. If we go to $250, I'm suggesting that we could go to 210 or 215, just slight increase to the refuse fee. And when you add that together with the savings we're going to get from moving to the modified pay-as-you-throw, in a couple of years, you get to the total that they were recommending to us. It doesn't happen right away, though, but... It doesn't happen right away, though, but you, I mean, people do notice that the more you increase their fees, those are not tax deductible, whereas the tax, the taxes on your property are, so I was thinking that that might be something we could do to be responsive to people's concerns about taxes and fees all going up at once.
Right, and that was actually one of the things, back in the '94 or '95, when the first, the '94 override, there was a conscious decision to keep a piece of the cost of solid waste removal in the tax base.
Yeah, in fact, I think we lowered the trash fee at that time.
Right, to push it towards something that can be deductible, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
So, there's a lot of, a lot of pieces, which is...
So, I think we've got three topics of conversation for January 6th.
Yes.
My goal for January 13th is that we actually come down to brass tacks and have, and put some proposals on the table. This doesn't have to be one proposal, in fact, I would like to have available for our public hearings, which will be the following week, you know, at least two, and possibly three different proposals, so that we can get, you know, present a range of options to people and get input on all of them. So, so I think, you know, circle the 13th, two weeks from tonight, on your calendar, that's when I think we need to be prepared to discuss filling in some of the blanks on the page you see on 6, you know, 6.2 of your package, which is Mr. Kleckner's, some, you know, formats for how, how some of these override questions might look. And then, as I made reference to a moment ago, I think that the week of January 19th through the 23rd is when we should be scheduling two public hearings, one in the evening, one in the morning, to, you know, present these, these options to the, to the public.
I'm sorry, say those dates again, we're going to do...
Well, it's the week of, I haven't proposed a specific date, you'll ask for your input on that, but I'd like a morning meeting and an evening meeting, and not necessarily on Tuesday night, as part of our regular meeting, on the week of the 19th. Now, bear in mind, 19th is Martin Luther King Day, so I think we're really talking about the 20th, 21st, 22nd, 23rd as, as public hearings, and then that leaves us to the 27th, when we, you know, hopefully are ready to make a, make an actual vote. Possibly, we, I think we have a little bit of leeway that could possibly go one more week if necessary. Your thoughts? Sounds good?
So, the 13th, do we need, do we need to be thinking about any additional formal presentations, or maybe that'll be clearer after next week?
You know, my...
So, what, I guess the real bottom-line question is, what, what do we need to be able to be in a position to fill in the blanks, and have we done enough to get there?
Well, that's why I'm asking about the 6th, because that's your, that's your chance to get the rest of the information that we need, so that on the 13th, we can fill in the blanks.
Yeah, can I ask you, Mr.?
Now, look, it's not engraved in stone, if next week, you know, we have a conversation and more, you know, more problems present themselves, and more areas that we think need to be explored before we get to the, you know, actually filling in the blanks, as we said, then I guess we'll have to adapt, but right now, does this look feasible to everybody?
Yes, okay. I have a, one more question for Mr. Kleckner now. I put on the town needs side, the sidewalk snowplow that I've been talking about. I'm wondering if there's anything else that, I mean, I do think that it would be nice for the many, many people that don't have kids in the schools, if we could say, oh, here's something you're getting, you know, when we're passing an override, and I have asked around, and I think that, knowing the situation we're in, people are reluctant to come forward from the different departments with their needs, but, you know, if there was another thing or two, we should get it into the mix by, by this next meeting, if there's some things that people really have needed that we have not been able to do. So, I just throw that out to you as a thought.
Are you thinking on the operating side as well as the capital?
Yes.
Well, obviously, any, any amount that we put on will then compete with the bottom-line, but...
Yes, well, I mean, I just...
Especially as we're pushing back on some of the non-tax...
I appreciate that, but I think that an override, we have never, we have not had in the past, an override, except for debt exclusion, we've not had an override solely for the schools, and when you look at the demographics and the voters in town, many, many of them don't have kids in schools, and I think they're still supportive of the schools, but it would be nice to say to people that there's some, something in it for them, too.
I'm weary of adding hundreds of thousands of dollars to the, to the override, just to make that political point. I mean, but we can talk about it. On the other hand, I haven't heard from TPW Commissioner saying that they need another sidewalk plow, and that...
Oh, yes, he said it right here.
And that it's, that it's somehow needs to be, you know, it hasn't been in the, in the CIP, but should be, and, but if I missed it, you know...
He did say it right here.
Yeah, when given the opportunity, he did.
You know, I do notice...
I mean, I think, I think people have been getting the message that they shouldn't ask for anything, because the difficult situation with the budget, and...
Well, I think it's been difficult, because the override, at least the override study committee, has, has suggested that the town make even, you know, efficiencies as opposed to adding back, so that's been the basis going forward, and so, you're right, we haven't asked departments, but, you know, I look back at the '08 override, and clearly, there are, there are a number of very specific, and not that expensive, but some, some, some specific issues for town needs, so you, and you also have that opportunity on the debt exclusion. You know, the sidewalk snow removal is, is one, as you know, Nancy, because you're serving on the task force, that has had a lot of interest by town meeting and others, so, you know, to me, that probably would be one that I, if the board was interested in putting some money, that's where I'd put it.
Since this sidewalk snowplow is going to be, it sounds like it's going to be a topic of conversation in future meetings, maybe we can get an update on where this committee is, and sort of tentative recommendations that it's going to make about clearing of snow in, in commercial districts.
I mean, it's not that we don't have sidewalk snowplows right now.
I understand.
That's the, that's the point. I haven't heard like a cry that we need another piece of equipment now, and just to throw in another piece of equipment, because it's politically expedient, I...
It's, it's hard to say it this year when there's no snow, but last year, I can tell you, we got many, many complaints, which led to the formation of this committee, that the sidewalks in commercial areas were in bad shape, and people were, in fact, many of the seniors are afraid to go out when the sidewalks are icy, and so, it was a big topic, it's a big topic at the senior center, it's a topic on my work with the Brookline as an age-friendly town committee, and it's, was, you know, generally a topic at town meeting, so I think there is some significant desire in that area.
But what I haven't heard is from our DPW Commissioner telling us, if I had one more bombardier, or whatever, whatever it is, it would make a difference. I don't know if he's...
He said that right here.
I, I haven't heard him come to us to ask for it, I've heard, you know, I've heard after parting, I've heard him say it, but...
Well, we have, I'll be very clear, we have not encouraged departments to, to add anything, but since it did come up, I'll make sure he's prepared to talk about it again, but is that next week, or is it at the public hearing, or what?
Can we add that to next week, and we can explore this idea with, with the Commissioner? I mean, it's not just having another piece of equipment, it's, it's the manpower and the scheduling, and again, you know, it's, it's one thing if the, if the shortage of equipment is actually why we're, the sidewalks are less than satisfactory, but if, there could be a lot of factors that are responsible for that.
Sure.
I'll ask him to address that next week.
Okay.
So, shall we talk about proposed dates for the public hearings of the week of the 20th?
I would request the day hearing not take place on Wednesday, the 21st. I have a conflict in the morning.
So, the 20th, so the 19th is out, the 20th is out, the 21st is out for a day hearing.
Wait, why is the 20th out?
It's Tuesday, well, we could do the morning of the 20th.
Yeah.
For the morning hearing.
And the evening of the 22nd?
And the evening of the 22nd, does that make sense to people? Okay, so what's planned on that?
22nd evening, 20th morning.
We have to make sure this room is available on Thursday evening.
All right, Mr. Kleckner, will you?
I will.
Look into those dates, please.
I will.
All right, anything further on override? We have, I see Mr. Bell has arrived, so we can do his interview and wrap up our business for the year. Mr. Bell, we're going to return to agenda and item number seven, we have an interview for Paul Bell, who's candidate for reappointment to the Preservation Commission. Paul, tell us about what you've been doing, what your role is on the commission, and why you'd like to, why you'd like to continue.
Well, first of all, I'm honored to be the last piece of business for the year. Some distinguishing role to my appearance here. Yeah, so I've been on the Preservation Commission for about, what, three or four years now? Three or something like that, and I think probably one of the most important roles I've been fulfilling is that I'm one of the Preservation Commission members, who is a member of the Neighborhood Conservation District Commission, since a certain number of the NCD members have to be Preservation Commission members, that's sort of was my, I guess, introduction to the NCD, which I am now chairman of, and we've been doing a lot of good work, and also, you know, at being a part of the Preservation Commission for a period of time, you start to learn, you know, it is, it is a commission membership that you get better at over time, and you learn, you know, how the commission works, and how the guidelines work, and how different projects that come before the commission work, some don't come through that often, for example, ground-up construction in historic districts and local historic districts aren't that often, and so, having some experience behind you really helps, and having some members on the commission who've been through it really helps. So, I guess that gives you maybe a flavor for what I've been doing. The commission's workload's been getting much heavier, we're now meeting often twice a month to carry all the hearings that come before us, a lot of demolition permits, but a lot of renovation work, too, a lot of additions to buildings that sort of count as demolition and come before us, outside of local historic districts, I guess, and then projects that are inside LHDs, too. So, there's a lot of work to be done there, so...
Tell us about the current makeup of the commission, and whether you think it's balanced, whether you think there's an expertise that's, that's lacking there, or...
I think it's pretty balanced, in terms of, there's some realtors on there, there's architects, and there's, you know, there's a really good group of architects, and I wouldn't call them engineers, I guess, there, but, you know, there's people with historic preservation experience in architecture, and so, that's, I think, good. There seems to be a balance between people who are a little more maybe hardcore preservation, and people who are a little more understanding of the fact that people want some freedom to do things with their property, so I think there's a good balance there, too. I'm the only lawyer on the, on the commission, I think it is important to have somebody with a legal background, so that's good, but I don't think you need more than one, I don't know that it would be harmful, but I don't think you necessarily need it. People seem to be able to come to the meetings, you know, their workloads and schedules seem to be okay, we don't seem to have a lot of, for example, permanent members that can't make it on a regular basis often enough, so I think it's pretty balanced.
Good. Questions for Mr. Bell?
I would have one more comment, maybe, especially now that the NCD's been added. I think that one thing that would be really valuable for the town to try to accomplish going forward is more coordination between the Preservation Commission and NCD with the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeal, because projects come before us in different orders, but typically, they come to us first, I guess. They do come in different orders, and, and what happens is, if there's not good coordination between the boards, then, you know, the, the applicants get approval in, at one location, only to go and find that, you know, like, for example, the Preservation Commission will have one idea about what a project should look like, they'll go through a rather rigorous process, and then they'll go to the Planning Board, which will have a completely different idea, and it's, neither side is wrong necessarily, but there would be so much, I think, advantage to the town presenting a better front to the applicants, and also just not wasting, you know, the time of the members of the Board, Planning Board, and Zoning Board, and the members of the commission, in accomplishing something that actually doesn't end up working for the other side, so some way to get more communication, I think, could be very helpful.
Interesting. Good.
Do you have staff, you have staff people that come, it's the preservation staff?
Yeah, we do, we have.
So, nobody from the other side of the planning department tends to come to your meetings?
They don't tend to come to the meetings, that's true. There's, there's opportunity for communication between staff and, obviously, the planning staff, since they all work on the same floor in the same area, and there is some communication, but that doesn't seem to filter down to the actual board members of the, of the boards as much.
Anything further for Mr. Bell?
Maybe that's an opportunity for a discussion with our planning director.
Yeah, no, I think it is.
Yeah, I thought some sort of a, I don't know, a committee that would be made up of some of the Preservation Commission members, and some of the Planning Board and Zoning Board members, or some sort of way for them to start talking about how to make that happen better.
Yeah, I think Ms. Steinfeld, we should bring her into the conversation, and maybe she can come up with...
Oh, yeah, she may have some thoughts.
With a thought on it, so...
Yeah.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work and your dedication to the business of the town and the Preservation Commission, we wish you a Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you all, and thank you.
And we, with that, we wish a Happy New Year to everybody out there. 2014 has certainly not been an easy year for the Board of Selectmen, but I don't think there's any year that's an easy year for the Board of Selectmen, I don't expect that 2015 will be any easier. I will say, it's, I think I speak for all of us, that it's a work that we do out of, out of love, and, and we look forward to it. Many, much more love next year.
I think we're going to have it.
Happy New Year, everybody. This concludes our business for 2014.